Officer Hudson, this is already out of the basket with the city's Ash Brother Dennis Price to do our prayer tonight in Oakdale City's prayer and Dennis's friend's prayer and every time we call on him, he shows up. So, we appreciate him and would you mind standing after prayer and David Blakey will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would you stand with us please?
Let's bow together. Father God, as we gather here tonight, here at City Hall, here in Russell Springs, in the town in which many of us live and have for many, many years, and we're so thankful for this city. I'm so thankful for the leadership here, those who have chosen and tried to be in leadership here and they've been elected to serve in this capacity. And we know throughout Scripture, we see those structures in place of authority. So, Lord, we just want to just come to you tonight and ask you for your blessing upon those who are gathered here to lead this city. We know that there's a lot of issues, a lot of complicated issues at times. And I think about all of these men and women who give so much of their time and energy to make this the best place that they possibly can for us to live. And I think about all these guys that have worked out in this cold and all of the different infrastructure things that have happened and all of that. So, Lord, I just pray for supernatural ability for this city to get through all of these things. And for us, who are just citizens here in Russell Springs, to be patient and kind and encouraging to each and every one of them. I pray for Mayor Thomas as he leads this council and each of the council members, all of the auxiliary staff and all of the employees of this city. Lord, I just pray your blessing upon them. I'm thankful for them. So, Lord, as this meeting is being conducted here tonight, I pray for the power of your spirit that you would lead in this meeting tonight where nothing happens apart from you. You tell us that. So, Lord, I pray that you would be the center of everything that goes on here in Russell Springs and bless this time again in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Remain standing and put your hand over your heart and repeat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, David. Thank you, Rob. We call the Russell Springs City Council regular meeting January 12th to order. Before we get started here, we've got a new council member and I just want to recognize Cody. Thank you. Appreciate you. You'll have a lot of time to work on city business. So, we're glad you're here and one of us. Congratulations, my friend. The first thing is Chris calling to order. Coby, I'll make sure we've got a call.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Ms. Daniel.
Here.
Mr. Holt.
Here.
Mr. Blakey.
Here.
Mr. Barnes.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mayor, do you have form?
Alrighty, the first thing is acceptance of the minutes and you've had them in your packet. And if you didn't, Chris has sent some out, paper, most of them's on the computer email. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes or the addition or additions to the minutes?
I move that we accept the minutes as well.
Got a motion by Sherri. Need a second?
Second.
Second by Timmy and David. So, need a roll call, Chris.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Chris. The next thing on the agenda is acceptance of casters' spursments and financial statement, saying you should have them either on your laptop or Chris has sent them out. I hope you've had time to go through them, look at them. Are there any questions about any of the financial statement?
Make a motion, pay the bills.
Thank you, Tommy. Need a second?
Second.
Hey, but Cody, we're gonna let Cody get in there.
That's what Cody.
You gotta get in there, Cody. You gotta get it.
You gotta get in there quick.
A bit in the stockyard.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alrighty, the next thing is old business. We do not have nothing to file on old business. Has the council has got anything old, old business? Anybody got anything old business that want to bring up? Anything that we've missed out on or anything? If not, the next thing is new business. And the first thing on new business will be old business, but it's gonna be new business for him tonight. We sure do appreciate him. Judge Robinson has left office and he's been in 12 years. And four years for that as council member. And just to let you know, since I've been in, the four years I've been in, he's done more for Russell Springs than I think any judge we've ever had. And that's just saying, we're gonna miss him. And I hope we don't miss him as bad as I think we're going to, but we're gonna miss him and we appreciate him. So, Judge Robinson, we got something from the council to give you and let you know how much we miss you and how proud we are of you. So, we got you. Hold on, that's head. Yeah, that's head. You're the one that got you down there. So, watch out.
That's a little higher class.
We are. But we were.
Is it a turkey or what is it?
Eagle, I think, bro.
Sorry, couldn't be here last night. I was shooting birds.
Well, you don't shoot that one. We've got something else for you. We started giving out a few coins to the most people that we really appreciate and that stuff, of course. So, just to let you know, anytime you're a regular citizen of Russell Springs, anytime you need something from this council, don't hesitate.
Will this get me out of parking ticket? Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Judge Robinson. The next thing on the agenda is the audit.
Kevin with the RFH.
So, our auditor's here tonight and he's gonna go audit with us and tell us whether we're gonna be in trouble or not.
Okay, well, thank you all for having me tonight. This is my first time presenting here. Is this, I guess, right here? Is this where you typically have people present? Okay. Chris is handing out to you two things. There's a letter and there's a greenbound book. And I'm gonna go over that quickly with you all tonight. First, my name's Kevin Fisher. I'm with RFH CPA. I was in charge of the city's fiscal year 21 audit. And I'm here to present the results of the audit tonight. I'm gonna wait just maybe one second for Chris to pass them out. So, when I'm talking, you guys can flip through. So, one thing I will say is we're looking, it's important to realize what we're looking at is June, the fiscal year 21 audit, which is as of June 30th of 2021. So, I know you are looking at numbers this evening from your financial packet. Just keep that in mind when you're looking at the financials and you look at how much is in cash and you know, that type of thing. So, I'm gonna start with the greenbound book and take you all through it real quickly and hit the high points. The first thing you'll notice is it's pretty thick. It's 49 pages. So, there's a lot of information in it. For the sake of time, I'm gonna try to hit the high points and explain what I think is important for this evening. If you all have any questions, please feel free to ask me anything that you have on your mind. But if you start with the greenbound book and right directly there to the table of contents is the independent auditor's report. So, the independent auditor's report is a two-page document. A lot of the language in it is standard. It doesn't change much year to year. The important thing in the auditor's report is what is the auditor's opinion? And on the bottom of the first page there, there's a paragraph that says opinions. I'm not gonna read the whole paragraph, but I'll start reading it. So, you can see where I'm at. It says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities." And I won't read the whole thing, but it goes on. So, with that as saying, that's a clean audit opinion. That's as good as you can get audit opinion. That means we were able to perform our audit and express an opinion. That is, everything that follows these pages, the financial information, the disclosures, we all think is fairly stated in all material respects. So, it's a good audit opinion. And again, we're looking at June 30th, fiscal year 21. Directly after this will be the fiscal year 22 audit that we'll be working on as well. Directly after the auditor's report, I'm gonna take you through what's in the greenbound book. On page three is the management's discussion and analysis report. This goes from pages three to seven. This is a document that's put together by the city and it just summarizes certain financial highlights that the city wants to point out. Our role as auditors, we review it and make sure the data in it agrees with the audited financial statements. So, I want to point out from pages three to seven that that information is there for you all to review, but I don't want to go through the actual figures in it. On page eight is the beginning of the audited financial statements. So, again, this is as of June 30th of 2021. You know, if you all have been here for multiple years, you might be familiar with the financial statements if you're new, maybe not. But there's two sets of financial statements the city is required to show. On page eight and nine is the citywide financial statements on a full accrual basis. Like if the city was a four property entity, how they'd have to show their financial, how the city would have to show its financial statements. So, it shows everything. It shows cash. It shows debt. It shows all liabilities. Everything in here is on these two statements. And then on page 10, there's a separate set of financial statements on a totally different basis of accounting. So, it's really designed for two sets of users. You know, your banks are more likely to use pages eight, nine, full accrual set. Page 10, 11 is a separate set of financial statements that's under modified accrual, which is more like a cash basis, which is more like what you all probably review when you get the financial information monthly that Chris provides you with. So, I wanted to point out those two differences. So, on pages 10 and 11 is the governmental funds, which is primarily the general fund. If you flip to page 12, it shows you the utility, the water and sewer, and the senior citizens fund are shown on those. On page 10, I'm sorry, I'm a page off. I meant to say page 12. If you go to page 12 is the water and sewer and senior citizens fund. So, page 12 to 14 shows the financial information for them. On page 15, from page 15 to 37 is all required disclosures that are designed to support the financial statements. So, the previous pages that I was pointing out to you shows how much cash the city had, how much debt the city had, how much capital assets the city had. Pages 15 to 37 provides a ton of information about those figures. Talks about the different basis of accounting. It talks about the types of assets the city has. Talks about the type of debt the city has. For the sake of time, I'm not gonna go through all that. I just want to point out that that's there and provides a lot of good information about the city's financial statements. So, that's from pages 15 to 37. 15 to 33, I can't read. Sorry. If you go to page 34, I always point out there's a required schedule that shows you how you did versus your budget. So, you know, I know you all spend time reviewing and approving the budget, particularly for the general fund. And this gives you that information as far as how you performed versus the budget. So, I always point out that that schedule is there. And then from pages 35 to 44, if you were, if you got this far into it and you're looking through it, there's a ton of information on the CRS net pension liability. Believe it or not, that's all required information that governmental accounting standards require. It's not in there because we just like to provide and make more pages and print papers. It's all required. It talks about how the liability is calculated. It gets into a lot. I just want to point out it's there. It's required. The city's presented it with, in accordance with professional standards. And if you all have any questions about it, let me know. But I don't think it's something for this evening that we really need to dig into. And then if you'll turn to page 46, which doesn't have a page number at the bottom, so directly after page 45. So, when you engage the auditor every year, you're actually gonna get two separate, you're actually gonna get two separate reports. You engage the auditor, provide an auditor's report on the financial statements, which I mentioned previously, was a clean audit opinion, as good as you can get, which is really good. Then you engage the auditor as part of our engagement to review and assess internal controls and to report any deficiencies. If you think about, if you hear from other places or just through the years, if you hear the word audit finding, this is where you see findings, if you have a finding. It's the auditor's assessment of internal controls and was there, were there any deficiencies in those controls or were there any compliance issues? So, that's what this report is. For fiscal year 21, we did have one finding and that finding is on page 48. And if you were here when we presented the audit last time, you might recognize the finding. So, it's a finding related to segregation of duties. And the fiscal year 20 report, we actually issued on October 12th of 2021. So, if you put those dates together, this finding was disclosed and reported after fiscal year 21 was already over. So, this finding was gonna have to be repeated just because of the timing. If you look at the response of page 40, at the, in the middle of page 48, it shows that the city has made the adjustment related to the findings. So, the expectation is that the finding will be removed and not be repeated for the fiscal year 22 audit, since it's already been corrected. I think it's important to note, I mean, you don't like repeat findings. You know, that's never a good thing. This is one of those cases where it was just because of timing, it was gonna be repeated because of the timing of how the audits fell. So, if anybody has any questions on that, please let me know. And that's, that's everything in the greenbound book. You know, me trying to go quickly and not take up too much of your time. You also get a letter. So, each of you have in front of you a letter. And this is a required communication that the auditor provides. We call it the governance letter. It's a letter between the auditor and those charged with governance. So, your greenbound book is a public document. So, anyone can access it, you know, and request it. The latter is a communication with the auditor and with you all. And it's designed for the auditor to communicate certain things that maybe wouldn't be appropriate to be in the audit report itself in the greenbound book. So, that's kind of my explanation of why this letter even exists. There's really, you know, there's nothing in this letter that was a problem. We didn't have any difficulties. We didn't have any disagreements. So, this letter is positive. We did have a recommendation on the budget. If you go to the second page there. At the bottom, it mentions that the general fund was slightly over budget. And this issue was related to just how governmental accounting is, can be complicated and tricky. And it was related to how the loan proceeds were budgeted and how the expenditures were budgeted that those loan proceeds were used for. So, we had some conversations with Chris on how to address that and to make the budget a little bit better going forward. So, it's important to note that this, on page 10, is not a finding. It's just a recommendation. We're always looking for things that we can do to make recommendations for the city to improve their processes. So, that's why we included it in the letter. We also include, anytime we have to make an adjustment, we include the audit adjustments. Most of these are related to the pension liability. And then we had a few, a few adjustments. This amount of adjustments that we had to post is, all fits on one page. We didn't find it to be an issue or out of the norm. A bad audit when it comes to adjustments. I've had audits that have five pages of adjustments and that's when you get into an area where maybe you have some issues with your accounting. So, that's, that's my, you know, what I wanted to cover this evening. Did you all have any questions on any of that? Or anything on your mind that you're like, you know, the next time I see that auditor, I want to ask him? You need a long time. I could've had you here for a couple hours if I really wanted to go over all.
Thank you, Ed. Appreciate you. Looking forward to seeing you again. I know you and Chris will be busy starting that 22 audit.
Yep, yep.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you all for having me.
Thank you, guys. Thanks.
Go ahead, sir.
You go ahead.
They done go. With snooze in the.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes. Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Chris. In heaven's name. We appreciate them. The next thing is the second reading of ordinance 2022-06. It's ordinance, ordinance of intent to annex private property owned by Timothy Abernathy and Keith Owen. That was sponsored by David Blakey. And we had our first reading at the last meeting. So, I need a second reading. It'd be a summary, Mr. Wilson.
Nothing changed from the first reading, except I added the first reading date of December the 8th. The second reading would be today, January 12th. And publication date will be January the 19th. That's something that I changed in the document from Mr. Smith's first reading last month.
Cool. Okay, council, that's the second reading. So, I need a, or any discussion on it at all. Cody, you might not know it's the property down Oaklumbia Road, it's covered by the Abernathy and then brought it to us.
Yeah, ma'am. Close to David.
I'm just happy we can add X that in there.
How far down will it go, David? How far down does it go?
It will go all the way down to Mr. Egnu.
Okay, but it doesn't take their house in?
It goes, it goes from the corner of Lakeway Drive, or Lakeview Drive down to the property of.
I know. See, I wasn't here last night.
Yeah, I think it's close to 10 acres.
So, it goes right to Mike Egnu's property, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I understand. Yeah.
So, it's not gonna affect anybody?
He sponsored that.
They're building new houses.
Make a motion on that.
Make a motion to accept.
I need a second.
Second.
And then station the debt on his property.
Thank you, David. Need a second?
Second. Timmy, Timmy looks pretty good on you.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next thing on the agenda is rezoning residential property of R2 located on Lakeview Drive to make it a C1 commercial property, which has done went through zoning. And Jeremy, you want to explain that, what zone it found on it?
Uh, yeah, mayor. There is six parcels that will be affected with the zone change. The zone changes are, all the current zone changes on those six parcels are R2 and they will be going to C1. There's two property owners that will be affected by these zone changes. All contiguous property owners, West 6 letters. There was a public hearing. All the criteria has been met. It did pass zoning on January 5th. And the two property owners that, the proposed zone change will be Brian McElroy and the Emerson Family Trust. So, they're all going from R2 to C1, or R2 to C1. So... And we're all forward. The zoning is needed for the council to ratify these zone changes. So, if anybody has any questions?
Is that there were Tommy's stories, is it?
On the contiguous to it.
Yeah, it's right next to it.
By the farmers, the new farm, feed store, what it gonna call.
I thought that was already commercial.
That parcel is, but one of the parcels of Mr. McElroy owned was not.
Oh, okay.
There was some of the dirt was, but where the dirt got moved in was not him.
I see.
I would like a motion to accept this rezoning.
I'll make a motion. All the, they, everybody was good with it. I mean, I'm sure McElroy, they wanted it, didn't they?
The zone change was initiated by Mr. McElroy. And we did have a public hearing. And like I said, there were 17 letters sent out to contiguous property owners. There were signs posted on properties. And there was a public hearing. There was only one person that attended the public hearing and there was no opposition. So, I don't foresee any problems.
I'll make a motion. Nobody else wants to?
Got a motion. Timmy, I need a second.
Well, I'll second you, Timmy.
Second for Sherri. We done had the discussion, but does anybody else have any discussion?
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
I'm going to abstain on that. And the reason being, I was at that meeting, the zoning meeting they had. So, I heard all the discussion going on during that property. So, I'm going to abstain.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Appreciate all of you. The next thing on the agenda is the economic development update. Jeremy, you got an update for me?
Well, I do have one thing, mayor. I'd like to, I'd like to say, I think all you guys have a letter in front of you from Mr. Smith. And what that was, the reason for that letter is Mayor Thomas and I had a meeting the other day of some folks that was wanting to fix the Kmart building. They're trying to rent that building from the owner. They have actually sent in, this is their third, I think, LOI they're offered. So, we're having some trouble with the current owners and that was the reason you see the letter in front of you all. But we are trying and just one day at a time.
You got an update on our district, haven't you?
But they have filled a hole up there. Yeah. They, I talked to them out the other day and said some of the electrical equipment is not gonna ship until March. But they are gonna try to have it open by fall.
Thank you, Jeremy. Appreciate it. The next thing is we've had some opposition and it's been on social media. You know, it's true, it's on social media, but we've had some stuff that's been on social media. And some people's called and asked about the veterans' flags or banners, the veteran banners. And we've even had people come up here and after recovery, going on, they just didn't understand. So, we want, Hootie's gonna show you and discuss and tell kind of what we're headed with it. And then after that, I think Chris and Brian's gonna go to the radio stations next week and kind of let everybody know because we're gonna take it over because we didn't want to lose it. We want to keep it.
Thank you, mayor.
So, everybody knows the Russell County Honor Guard, they, along with Sherri Lawless, she had this idea to start the Armed Forces Banner Program. And that's been really successful. Every time Frank come to drop off banners, Hootie, why don't you take this over? The city needs to take this over. They're running it to death. And as I told you, you know, just about every time until this last one, you know, the city's the one basically doing, doing all the work, putting them up, taking them down, maintaining them. And so, basically, the only change is gonna be a couple times. The major change is that from now on, the banners will be up for a four-year period. Of course, they'll come down through the winter. But the reason they're gonna be up for a four-year period is this one, you know, it is kind of starting to fray right here and starting to crack in the middle. And these guys went overseas and fought for us within hard time. And we just want to represent them and give them the best, the utmost respect that we can. We want the best looking things that we can. Have those on Main Street, you know, make Main Street as pretty as we can. I've got a few things here that I want to read. It's on the application that everybody will get. And once the, once the council ratifies the price of the banner, as well as all of this, then that's what we'll go with it. But it basically starts out, the city of Russell Springs is continuing the Armed Forces Banner Program that was established by the Russell County Honor Guard in 2018. The program will honor or recognize active duty or past duty veterans of all military branches. Family and friends may purchase a banner for the amount of $150, which Frank's price was to cover the banner. It's been $125. I've done some checking in the. I've done some checking and the prices, uh, you know, materials are going up, everything's going up. And that's why we got this price set at a hundred and fifty, if, uh, you know, if the council ratifies that. Um, and that covers the cost of production, the installation, the brackets. Um, and then the banners will be on display from Memorial Day to Veterans Day like they always have. And typically, they're put up twenty to thirty days prior to the birthday. Uh, they'll be up for a term of four years and if you want to order a banner, all the banner orders must be submitted to me at City Hall by the end of February. They'll order them one time a year. Uh, all you need is a good quality photo and a copy of the DD two fourteen showing an honorable discharge. I think the banners are a great program, I think it's made Main Street look excellent. We owe veterans a lot, we're going to have these meetings and go charge, work, do anything with them. That's all I've got, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
That also covers, the price also covers the mounts. I noticed that they've had some problems with the mounts in the past.
Correct.
They break pretty easy.
They do, they do. Be surprised how much it whips up down Main Street.
Yeah, exactly, so, I mean, they, once they pay for that, I mean, it's over. We fix mounts and everything, they break and everything.
That's it.
Will both, Hootie, will both have to be, uh, all that, uh, forms resubmitting, or is already enacted one?
No, no, once, uh, once you've purchased the banner, uh, we've got through, we've got all the information. Also, I didn't mention this a while ago, but, uh, the banners, as they become old, we definitely want to get those back to the family. I mean, they may not be perfect condition, but, um, I'm sure the families like to hang them in their house, their garage, wherever.
So, is that a one-time deal or is it every time you have to get a banner?
Every four years, you'd have to purchase another one. Yeah, and it's just because they deteriorate rate.
How many of them have you had, though?
Oh, I think we've got, uh, one or two light poles up and down Main Street that's not full and about every pole has two to a pole.
Yeah?
So, and these, they started in two thousand eighteen.
And we're not making money on this.
No, this is-
Hey, however you ask him, I think it's a one hundred and fifty dollar charge, it ain't every year.
Every four years, you have to pay it, right?
Every time he purchases.
So if it were to tear that, tear up between, within that four years, the city would go ahead and replace?
No, no, it's in the, I've got a disclaimer here that was in the disclaimer from the Honor Guard that if the banner becomes, uh, tore up, unsightly missing, damaged, vandalized, then it's the family's responsibility to replace it.
In more force.
I thought he, I thought the city took care of it.
Is this the year we're getting better ones or what, what year do we go with the date?
So, since two thousand eighteen, Frank has brought me two or three sets of banners, ten to fifteen, two or three times a year. Sometimes two weeks before he's going to take them down. And that's the reason we're going to do it in one quarter per year. And then that will start the four-year cycle. Well, I've got the list and the dates of when the first ones are put up, the first order will come down. And, uh, hopefully those guys will resubmit it, or those families. We definitely want to hunt them on Main Street.
You said you're going to have a deadline by the end of February?
Yeah, the order must be, uh, end of May, by the end of-
But if they purchase one through the year, that'll just roll over and you'll put it up, yeah.
Right.
And, and March, March thirtieth, the next-
The ones that are due this year, will y'all notify the families?
We will.
Yeah, that's what I want to talk about, uh, this year, or you're going to part it out now?
It'll be part of them and I have contact information for sixty percent of the people, some people, I guess that Frank knew, didn't? Submit a phone number and add it.
Same as your question, Kobe. Uh, whenever, whenever they buy one, he will have a file of that person and, and when it comes three years in, before the next year, he will send them a letter and let them know. Because here, here's what is happening here, the veterans, now that we build a veteran cemetery, I met with the three funeral homes the other day and, uh, they said they were taking the dead that were doing this because anytime you're buried over there, you're going to have to have a DD two fourteen. And they said a lot of times that they have trouble getting them and said they have to call St. Louis and everything. Now, Hootie will have a file of our bound Main Street, so a lot of times they said they could call Hootie and say, hey, you got a DD two fourteen on, on Gary Robinson? And he says, yeah, I do, then they can come up here and get the DD two fourteen and they don't have to do all the mailing and chasing. And they said it's just going to help them a lot, so, being a veteran cemetery will go, this will go along with the banners with the vet, veteran cemetery. And it's going to be a big undertaking for you, a big undertaking, because when they come up here, he's going to stop what he's doing, go meet with them and, uh, go through all the process. You got to get the picture, it's just, it's going to be a big deal, but he will have the file. And the reason we went to a hundred and fifty dollars or a hundred and twenty-five dollars now, well, you to think, between now and four years from now, the, the materials and the freight's going to increase.
Yeah.
So we'll settle for a hundred and twenty-five and then be a hundred and seventy-five. So, I mean, we don't want to make money, we're just going to be trying to break you and every veterans, that's what it's all about.
Yeah.
May go, go up more than what you expect.
Well, just have to bite the bullet if it does.
And I do want to comment too, I, I may help the city of Jamestown get theirs, I've been approached, uh, with just the ordering process. And it's, basically, I would help until I could get somebody down there to take it over. Somebody to step up at Jamestown, because they, they don't have a fourth of the banners that we do up here. But I want to see it continue for Russell County. So, if you know, if you've got any questions, it's on, I got-
I think, uh, we need to come up with, uh, some form of, of payment from some folks who couldn't access a hundred and fifty dollars to put that up there.
I agree. I agree.
I mean, that's a lot of money for that. Qualifies as, you know, they say the hundred and fifty dollars to put up there.
The Lake Area Foundation might be a good place to set up an account for that. And that way, you'd be surprised, people might donate to that specific, uh, account to help pay for stuff like that. Because I set one up years ago when the Honor Guard first started up and they still get donations through Lake, uh, Area Foundation people giving money just to help the Honor Guard.
You check with Jean Wilson and she's still kind of-
No, she's not there.
Isn't she their secretary though now or something?
Not, uh, not to add, maybe the Honor Guard, I'm not sure.
No, I mean, at the, I had, I know she's not secretary there, but I thought she had kept the foundation.
She may have, I don't know.
I think maybe she did.
But that might be something good that people don't like to, if it's set up right.
That's our judge.
You got it, Gary.
That's a good idea.
That is a great idea.
You take it over, Gary.
And, and David, that's something we can look into moving forward, like, you know, whatever the banner costs, at least get them to downpay them to the banner, because if they come in and the banner costs seventy-five dollars, a hundred dollars, they don't pay nothing, then the council will be responsible to pay that. Or, or we could put your name on the principal property.
It's tied to the Michael Blakey.
Y'all cold chicks.
That's all I've got, Michael.
All right, thank you, Hootie, appreciate you. And thank you for taking that over because we know it's a big responsibility.
Yes, sir.
Next thing on the agenda, Mr. Pierce, you got a police report?
Yes, sir. Uh, month of December, we had fifty-two traffic stops, twenty-eight of those were citations, there were nineteen, uh, traffic collisions, uh, six call responses, one J C three, and thirty-eight mothers deceased.
That it?
That's it? Got any questions?
Nothing like that, every week, but, really?
Do we not have anybody drinking and driving or anything?
I have some letters within the citations.
I'm going to get taped up and beat on the wall?
Something, J C three.
Oh, gotcha.
I've got a question, or, or a comment, and it's kind of a compliment too, in a way. I'll, I'll direct it to Hootie because he's the fireman that I happen to see here. But the fire department has, and Chris maybe, I think, is involved in the website for the fire department, has been showing, if they go out and do a call, they've got, on the website, it shows, you know, where you went and maybe pictures of the licking flames or what, you know what I'm saying? But it's, it's very informative and it, and it lets us know, this is what the fire department's doing. And, and could our police department? I mean, I don't think you want to put pictures if, if you're arresting me, but, you know, you went out and did some kind of community service or, or something on Facebook, on our webpages, just to show what we're doing and let people know where their money's going.
Right, we actually had four that went down to Fire Oaks, um, this, this week, Monday. We spent about an hour down over the residence and went, rode the room.
You know, and take some pictures and put it on Facebook.
I was actually supposed to do that, I, I'm not talking the way you're good.
And it's not just fires either, the fire department does, ever-
They do, everything.
Car accident, or almost all of them, where there's any cleanup or anything.
But I think it's a good thing that it lets the public know, because there are, like, if it's on Facebook, it's got to be true.
Oh, yeah.
But, I mean, people do sit and watch that kind of stuff and, and I think if you can show good, positive things that we're doing, it, it looks good for all of us.
Right.
We had a wreck up on one twenty-seven, I guess it was last week.
Yes.
And if, if they hadn't been up there to help us clean up, we'd have been there all night long, probably.
Thank you, Tim, appreciate you. Uh, anybody else before we move on here?
There wasn't any D U I S, Tim?
There was actually, I think, this, they broke it down just a little bit different this time, I think there was actually three out of that.
Okay.
Then you might want to print that separate because, uh, I know with alcohol, people, I'm, I'm sure they're going to ask.
Well, not necessarily just alcohol, under the influence means other things too, Jamie.
Anybody else before we move on here? Has the council got anything before I get to the mayor's report? Way it's word, Kobe, I ask if you got anything, then if you don't, I'll do the mayor's report, then we adjourn, so. All right, on the mayor's report, it's not too bad, we got the Christmas lights with seven thousand five hundred and eighty-two vehicles. So that's vans, church buses, even had a few school buses go through and it was, it was tedious when they went through. Uh, so if you average that out, let's just say four people to a car, you know, instead of, you've got buses, vans and everything. I know some of them went through, we talking about the-